Everyone, I want to welcome you to our La Sura City Council meeting dated September ninth, two thousand twenty-four. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order and begin with the pledge of allegiance. Council members, you all presented with your packets over the weekend. We had an opportunity to put it all over. Reach out for any questions we have had at this time. I would not see any motion to approve tonight's agenda. So, thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Councilmember Schlier seconded. Any other further comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council these two days in advance of the meeting. These items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. Mr. Robey, if you want to review these with us?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Six items on the next consent agenda. The first is approval of minutes from the August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting. Second, approval of dispersments through today, including those dispersments of two items over twenty-five thousand dollars. The first to MNPA for our August twenty twenty-four purchase power totaling seven hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and nine cents. The second to Neo Water Treatment for our FX three hundred wastewater chemical, thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-six cents. Third, approve a parade permit. The LSH High School and Middle School are doing another homecoming parade this year, and we received their application late last week. Fourth, approved Resolution R twenty twenty-four dash zero four six, which would approve a summary publication of order six oh nine, which is passed second reading at the last meeting. Item E, approve payment application number one. This is for our Main Street Substation Improvements Project, the electric department. And item F, approve personnel action, which is hiring of a water and wastewater operator.
Thank you, Mr. Robey. Somebody have any questions for Mr. Robey regarding the consent agenda? If not, I will undertake a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Good move.
Thank you, Councilmember Hallington. Councilmember Williams. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to public comment. Mr. Dewey, we have nobody going to make comment tonight. Moving on to the city administrators update. Mr. Robey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An update on our post-flood management. Building official zoning administrator emergency manager and whatever other titles he has, Justin Nielsen, and I will be meeting with FEMA later this week. It's the first meeting that we'll have formally sit down with FEMA and discuss the recovery scoping where we list all the expenses that we, the city, has has made in the disaster from the June, June and July flood. That's the first of several meetings with FEMA. At the next meeting, which will be September twenty-third here for city council, we are going to present a proposal to end the emergency declaration that city council laid back in June because we are through the emergency component and we're well into the recovery phase, and we don't see need for the emergency declaration anymore. Two weeks ago, I participated in a development tour, CEDOM, which is the organization that provides our staffing for the EDA, hosted a development tour with three of their member communities. Mapleton and Lake Crystal Onflow participated in a bus full of developers, bankers, and they drove around these communities and looked at what development has happened, what areas are right for future development. And so I gave the tour when they drove through La Sura, and eventually had two follow-ups from workers who were on that tour with questions about development here in La Sura. Last week, we had the Airport Commission meeting. The biggest thing that was discussed at the Airport Commission was the future capital planning. As you may recall, the Airport Commission earlier this year had recommended that in lieu of a new hangar, they wanted to take the direction of extending the taxiway on the north side of the runway. We've since talked to the FAA. The FAA will approve the taxiway extension, but it's not high enough priority to allow us to spend federal funds right now, so we're going to have to wait three years, maybe four years, to do that. And so we did present a capital plan to the Airport Commission that would involve building a new hangar at the airport in the meantime, so we can maximize use of the federal dollars. I've discussed in the past or shared information on the downtown walking tour. This is an effort that's led by the Rotary Club with participation from the Lions, the Nine Nature Center, and the Mayo Hops Historic Site. It's now being called the La Sura Heritage Alliance, and we are finalizing the historic panels that will be placed around the city. Right now, it looks like there will be about ten different panels all located in downtown. And it's going to look really neat. So hopefully, we'll have some previews of those in the coming month, month or two. We've got a planning commission meeting this Thursday, and at the risk of stealing Councilmember Schlier's thunder, I am going to share. Many of you may have seen last Friday, we'd launched the Future of the City survey, which is a public survey. We invited all members of the community to complete the survey. It's open through September twenty-seventh. It's online. Unless you have an exhaustive list of grievances, it should only take ten to fifteen minutes to fill out the survey. So it's quick, it's easy, and we'd love to get as many responses as we can. The link is in Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and also on the city website. The survey results will then be taken, compiled, and presented at the October twenty-sixth Future of the City Forum, which is being hosted by the Planning Commission. Justin Nielsen and the Planning Commissioner are putting together details on that, ten a.m. to noon on Saturday, October twenty-sixth. That'll be in high school, middle school, same as last year, but there's a presentation in the auditorium followed by breakout sessions in the media center. And the public is welcome to attend, invited to attend, as she said. Staff, they do work on the twenty twenty-five street utility project, which is also known as the North Fourth Street Cathcart Street Improvements Project. Foster and I sent through our second project management team discussion there. There will be a second open house coming up later this fall for members of the public. We'll share information about that open house when, when it's available, when we have details on the open house. And just a reminder to everyone that on October third, six p.m., Legion Park, the community gets a chance to celebrate how cool Marion Peck is as one of the National Silver Sneakers finalists. So, six p.m., Legion Park, October third, and the entire community is invited to come out and celebrate Marion, who's very excited about this adventure. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Robey. Anybody have any questions regarding his update at all? If not, this will roll us into the regular agenda, please, and we'll begin with Resolution R twenty twenty-four dash zero four four adoption of the twenty twenty-five preliminary levy and general fund budget. Mr. Robey, do you want to introduce our national director?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Director Grant is here tonight for two items on the agenda. I'll give a very brief introduction. But Personal Budget Committee has been meeting for the last few months on the twenty twenty-five general fund levy and budget. The culmination of those meetings with the Personal Budget Committee has led to tonight, which is council's requested action, which is decision on the preliminary levy for the general fund and budget for the general fund for twenty twenty-five. Again, as a reminder, and I know Brian will say this as well, but this is the first important decision that needs to be made by city council beyond today, between today and the end of the year. City council can modify the budget and levy in a downward direction if it chooses to do so, but cannot increase it from this point forward. And then I think I'll just keep it over to Ryan.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Like Administrator Robey had said, I'll just go through the process real quickly, but tonight we're here to look for approval on the preliminary levy that we will submit to the auditor by the end of the month. And then we will continue to meet with staff and PDC up until December. December ninth would be the meeting that we would present the final levy for twenty twenty-five. So, in summary, the preliminary levy for twenty twenty-five is a little over four million dollars. That's just under three hundred thousand dollar increase from twenty twenty-four, which represents a seven point nine percent increase. The biggest factors that we've got on here is in summary, and we'll go through some details. In the further slides, there's union and non-union compensation increase of about a hundred and two thousand dollars. We've got increases in IT and PE technology expenses of about seventy thousand and reduction in revenue for the community center specifically to the golf simulator of about fifty-five thousand dollars. And then we are increasing the capital fund of about eighty thousand dollars to allow for future capital projects in twenty twenty-five and putting some dollars out there for years beyond that. And then our debt service is increasing a little over fifty thousand dollars. That's just based on the existing debt payment schedules of our current debt. We didn't take on any new debt here in twenty twenty-five. Okay, so, again, a little bit more detail on the overall levy, our revenue assumptions. Our LGA, which is one of our bigger sources of revenue, is essentially flat year over year, and the county aid that we get for maintaining the highways is down a little bit, and that's driven by the turnback of CASA thirty-seven. Our small city assistance, we do have in there sixty thousand dollars. That's something that we didn't receive here in twenty twenty-four, so that is a net benefit year to year. Our building permits are up seventy-five thousand dollars as well. That's adding buildable lots on the edge of town. That land development being discussed, this assumes maybe half of those lots being done in twenty twenty-five. And then, as I mentioned before, the ice arena increases and memberships are up a little bit, but they're more than offset by the decline in the golf simulator revenue. On the expense side of things, the IT expenses and the union and non-union compensation that I mentioned on the prior slide, we do have a hundred thousand dollars in here to improve the fund balance and maintain state recommended levels. That's what we had in there last year as well, so that's not a year-to-year impact. We're increasing the capital levy to plan for future needs, and we currently are assuming seven percent for peep, our public employees' health insurance. We still have ten percent in there for our union health insurance that we haven't really received any, any input on yet. Off to the right are all the numbers that you can see there. The general levy up about seventy-four K. Greenie Center, eighty-four thousand dollars. Our Highway one sixty-nine abatement is flat. The capital levy is up eighty-one thousand dollars. EDA is up just a nominal amount of about four thousand dollars, and the debt is a fifty-four, fifty-three thousand dollars, like I mentioned before. You can see there, the second line to the bottom is the tax capacity. We have received those prelim numbers from the county. Our tax capacity is up a little over one and a half percent. So, combine that one and a half percent growth in tax capacity with the seven point nine eight percent let me increase it. It is increasing our city tax rate a little over five percent. The next slide here, some of these we've gone through, this is just specific to the general levy. Not a whole lot that I have had on this slide because a lot of the, the overall impacts of the total levy were, came from the general levy. So, let's move on to the next slide. Here, which is the breakdown of revenues and expenditures by, by department. You know, you can see up there for the license that the property taxes are, that's a levy amount, the seventy-four thousand dollars. Our licenses and permits are up seventy-five thousand. That's the building permits. And the intergovernmental is where the small cities assistance increase would, would hit there, and then the rest of the dollar increases or decreases are relatively small. On the general fund budget, the biggest dollar increases that you'll see there are for the police, which is the union and non-union compensation increases along with the PE technology, which is mainly driven by body worn cameras and new tasers. Streets is up thirty-five thousand. A good chunk of that is also the union increases. And then the unallocated expenditures, which is up forty thousand dollars. That is where our IT expense hits for the general fund. Now, this next chart here is just a typical pie chart that we show every year. No major shifts between departments, terms of percentage of the budget to, to be noted here. Onto the community center. Again, kind of get a lot of these bullet points in summary. Golf simulator revenues down. Memberships and ice arena revenue are increasing maybe about five thousand dollars each. And then we've got the health and insurance rates increases and compensation increases as well. This is just an additional slide on the community center budget, just breaking down the revenue and expenditures in a different fashion. Nothing new to know done this slide on the capital levy. All right, so this is where we've got an increase of just under eighty-one thousand dollars. On the next slide here is breaking that out into some detail. The overall budget amount of just over seventy, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The biggest item there is we've got three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for street maintenance improvements. That's up a little bit from twenty twenty-four, but it's still below what staff would, would really like to have that be year in and year out. We are assuming fifty thousand dollars for a large equipment program, something that we're trying to get ahead of some of the large capital needs that are sitting out there, mainly from Public Works, plow trucks, street sweepers. We've got the PE squad renewals or purchases. Community Center has a lot of needs, and then also our, our fire department. So, putting fifty thousand dollars, that is the intent there is that there's nothing specific that that will be spent on in twenty twenty-five. It's just hoping to get a head start on when those capital needs come and to hopefully avoid needing to find, or to take debt out for capital needs. Some of the big items on here, the outdoor pool needs resurfacing. That's about sixty-five thousand dollars in twenty twenty-five. We did levy for some of those dollars in twenty twenty-four here that we haven't spent, so we don't need to levy for those again. The total cost of the project is about eighty-five thousand. Is getting the new John Deere mower. And then the side, side delta quick connect for Public Works that allows them to use their asphalt zipper on uneven surfaces. We do have the small equipment purchases there above that item that is made up of a handful of small equipment items that we didn't lay out specifically. Just because the dollar amounts and those tend to change gives us a little bit of flexibility about what we currently have in there is a laser grader, a pavement machine, the GPS mower, and a generator, some of the items that, that make that up. So, I've been rambling in for a while. I'm going to stop at this point on the capital levy. There's been any questions offered. There's still a little bit left, but just to kind of break it up, especially on the capital portion, there usually tends to be some, some hard discussion on here.
Anybody? I have a question, not from you, Mr. Grant, but maybe from Mr. Robey. The abatement program, just for those who are listening, I want to explain real quick what that is again, Joe, and how much longer do we have on that?
Sure. So, the Highway one sixty-nine abatement program was established in two thousand and six. It was a joint abatement between La Sura County and the city of La Sura, where both entities agreed to set aside the property taxes associated with three separate parcels in the Highway one sixty-nine Hilltop area for a period of twenty years. So, the county would take all the property, their share of property taxes for those three parcels for twenty years and send them to the city, send them aside in the savings account, and the city would do the same thing for the property taxes in those three parcels over twenty years, take them, put them in a separate account, and for the purpose of long-term development and transportation and infrastructure in the Hilltop area. So, we have right now, our schedule is through twenty thirty. Contributions to that fund will be done.
Very good. Anybody else have any questions thus far?
What's a break-even point for the golf simulator as far as revenue and lease payment?
I would say, you know, the, the lease payment, it was leased over three years, so that payment is coming up in a couple of years, but the way the current revenue is going, I would say the break even is now looking more like six years than three when it was initially done. It might even have been a little bit less than three in terms of.
Three, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. To bear in mind, we had a very, very mild winter last year. I think that may have had a small.
Absolutely not.
No?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
People weren't all golfing, no matter how mild the winter was.
But you could find other activities.
How long are we stuck with it? When can we get out of it?
It's a three-year lease, so I mean, when that three years is up, it's not like we are locked into paying more for that.
But we won't have generated enough revenue to pay for it in three years.
No, not at that time from the revenue, no.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
So, your point on the abatement is a good time here. It's on the next slide here. Just quickly going over the abatement, the EDA levy, the debt levy for the abatement. Like Administrator Robey had said, it's projected to end in twenty thirty. It's at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars now. After twenty twenty-seven, it does drop to seventy-five thousand dollars, so we'll take a drop down the last three years to seventy-five thousand dollars per year. For the EDA, it's just a seven percent increase. It's four thousand dollars to cover the expenses and slightly improve the cash position of the EDA fund. And the debt levy, as mentioned before, there's, there's no new debt taken on. The increase in payments is just driven by existing debt schedules. The as I mentioned earlier, the twenty twenty-five North Fourth Street project, you know, when those payments do come due, or right now, estimating that'll be probably between a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars annually. The first, at least the first one, possibly two payments can be covered by the funds that the county has given to us. So, it's no impact here for next year, and even when those bond payments are due, we won't see a levy impact on those immediately. So, that's it. These next few slides are just, you know, nothing I'm going to cover, but the EDA budget we've already gone over, but we have the fire, the airport, and our IT budget that we don't specifically levy for, but they do roll up as part of our overall general fund, so I want to get those in front of you, but there's nothing major, really, to point out in, in any one of these. The airport, the fire, the IT. I would note that we've, this is something that used to be budgeted for within each of the funds, Enterprise Fund, General Fund, and several years ago, it was advised to us by our consultants to just create an IT fund that led to a little bit of a transition period in terms of budgeting for those expenses and revenues. So, these numbers look like they're a little bit all over the place. The expenditures are relatively flat, they're going up like, like other things, but we didn't have a balanced budget in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. So, of that increase that you see in the bottom line for the expenditures really is about fifty thousand dollars of what I would call fund improvement to. This is one of our funds that is mentioned in the audit as a negative position, so there's fifty thousand dollars of that increase just trying to get this fund back to all. And with that, there's a few charts at the end. The, the burden of changes of the tax capacity year to year, there were no material changes. Just keep in mind that for this one, just as recent as twenty nineteen, you know, our, the share on the residential was ten points less. It was around fifty-two. So, there was a period of time when a lot of the tax burden shifted to residentials year to year from twenty-four to twenty-five. That's not really happening. It's pretty nominal, but the, the issue is still there. And then the levy comparison of tax capacity graph, historical trend. And then this last chart is, if we've had anything like this in the last couple of years, but it's just a tax comparison with a few of our neighboring cities. We are the red line here on the left is what your city tax is payable. It's not including any county, school, special assessments. It's just the city portion. And on the bottom there is the taxable value of home in each of these. So, there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar, two hundred and two fifty. And you'll see that where the red line there, Lee Center and Montgomery, which I would say are maybe more comparable to us than Bell Plain or Jordan, we are, we are higher on average between the two above twenty percent. Lee Center is a little lower than that. Montgomery a little higher. There can be many different factors and puts and takes going both ways to explain that. If I try to pick the biggest one, it would, that we offer, that we offer our citizens that Lee Center and Montgomery don't have, would, it would be the community center. You know, that is, if you look in the beta, the community center levy dollars is about twenty percent of our total, so it's kind of some rough math there, but there's you break that down further and probably find other puts and takes, but that's out of pocket, the, the biggest one there. So, again, to wrap up, we're at seven point nine eight, like Administrator Robey said before, and Mayor Kirby. This is our preliminary level. We cannot raise that number anymore after tonight if it is approved. And it can, can go down. And we will continue to work with staff, with PDC as much as we can. I would note that, you know, last year, I think we were five point six eight, and that's, that's essentially where we were at at this point. We pretty much stayed flat. We do know that there are some things that we, we hold on to because we know that we can't go up, that we do hold some things back, like further insurance decreases or maybe some more small assistance, but we do try to come in with a somewhat aggressive view and not coming in at twenty percent and then coming really low. So, I'm not saying that it can't go down, but we, we have tried to take a pretty aggressive and reasonable approach to this. So, that's what I have.
Mr. Dewey, I know you have some questions. Real quick, I have a real quick question for you, Mr. Grant. So, if the LGA was where it was at last year, and the revenues were at the community center where they were at last year, we'd probably be at that five percent again.
Well, the, the LGA alone is probably four and a half points, because that was a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to help last year. The community center, that's probably a point and a half. So, you're looking at six points between those two. You know, there's other our building permits is better this year, and it wasn't last year, but those are some, some big ones, but especially the the LGA, we knew that it wasn't going to come up and be another hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, but we were hoping it wasn't going to be just two thousand dollars because that makes our revenue even more fixed than it usually is.
Thank you. Mr. Dewey, okay, I, in, in your packet, under the general fund, you have transfers in five hundred and twenty-six thousand and then transfers out. Where does that five hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred
and then transfers out. Where does that five hundred and twenty six thousand, five hundred come from?
Five hundred thousand of that is from the electric fund that we discussed in the past one. So that's kind of the, you could call it kind of like a franchise fee, but that's the five hundred thousand dollars in from the electric fund. Trying to get to that. Was that the final presentation?
Well, yeah. And then I'll just end by saying, um in just as a reminder to the council, in the two thousand twenty one, the base levy was one point two eight million dollars. Last year, it was two point seven three zero million year, a million. Four years, forty nine percent increase in four years. However, I would like to applaud the efforts from the workshop numbers we got to what, where we are here. I think, you know, it couldn't have been easy getting from here to here for you guys, but for myself, as I said at the workshop, three, three point two percent inflation, three to four percent for growth. That would put that nine percent base levy, if you could make that seven, I applaud it all the way through, which would equate to about another fifty grand, I think, if my numbers are right. I think that's fair. A- and at the risk of sounding redundant from a year ago, with a forty nine percent increase in the levy over four years, I'm not suggesting giving a dime back, but just don't start throwing dollars on top. You've already got it. Use it and be judicious with the three to five. I mean, I looked in the man and then in the Mankato paper. They were going apoplectic because they had an eight percent, eight point seven percent increase like three years ago. And they're debating between three and four on their levy. And here we sit at nine. It's too much. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Two, I'm sorry. Um I just want to remind everybody, this is a uh a joint effort, not only with our city staff and our personnel and budget committee, but also we included the interior council at the workshop, which I kind of applaud everybody with their teamwork there. I mean, we worked very hard to get up this number. And I want to end with, um I want to remind everybody, this is a preliminary, preliminary uh levy. The final one will come out on December, we will vote on it December ninth. That's.
Yes.
December. This is December ninth. So with that said, is there any other questions before we vote on? Any other comments?
If not. Can I just ask a question, Councilor Two? It's okay. So the the nine percent base levy tool, I understand where you're getting that. And it's it's, I just want to make sure everyone understands, I'm not refuting anything that you're saying about the nine percent because that's what the math is for the base levy. It's nine percent year to year. And it's six percent for general operations, eleven percent community center and twelve percent capital levy. So that nine percent is made up in generally equal parts by increases to capital, community center and general operations. Those three things together in somewhat equal parts, dollar wise makeup that that nine percent. So to, that's simplified where the math gets, I see. And then five hundred and twenty six to five hundred is is the electric fund. And then just because I happen to have it pulled up and sometimes I like to pretend like I know more than Mr. Graff does. There are some small components from the fire service fund, the stormwater fund and um the refuse fund for administration. So those funds that don't have staff or media staff, but do need administration, whether it's utility billing time or whatever else, there's their funds are small amounts, a few thousand dollars. Here I know that I transferred to the general fund just for money for the support that the general fund provides. If you guess. Thank you. Anybody else?
Just one comment, same thing I had at the work session. I'm happy with the number that we've got for the preliminary, but I'd still like to see it around six percent for final. So I like what we've done for.
Two in order. Thank you. Anybody else? If not, I will eliminate a motion to adopt a resolution R twenty twenty four, D C four four, proving the two thousand twenty five preliminary general fund budget and levy. So thank you, Councilmember Swandler. Councilmember Williams, thank you. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
I agree.
Anybody opposed? Oh, we have one opposed. If you make note of that, Councilmember Two, thank you. We are on the item seventy called Public Hearing Certification of Delinquent Utilities. Mr. Roby?
I'll let Mr. Graff just jump in. Is Mr. Graff okay with that?
Sure, I am. All right. Uh just to summary here, so annually, uh city staff prepare this delinquent uh account utility accounts as of the end of August. Uh we must hold a public hearing related to the certification of these delinquent accounts. Uh just uh early last week, uh we did mail out four hundred and four letters to property owners. The total delinquent balance was six hundred ten thousand, eight hundred and sixty and eighty two cents. Uh this balance represents an increase of approximately five percent over last year, uh which is approximately what our rates went up year to year. So it was not the same rate of increase that we had seen. It's still a big number, but it's not the, you know, twenty five to thirty percent because we finally had two full consecutive years of late fees that were being added. Uh so it was a a more representative uh comparison. So comparing that, um all right, uh just to level set. So last year, um we mailed out four hundred and thirty eight letters, so a few more letters. We did this year set a little bit higher of a minimum to avoid sending letters out to very small dollar uh delinquent balances. So that's why the number of letters is down a little bit, but the the amount last year was about five hundred and eighty one thousand dollars. So that's the the five percent increase year over year. Uh of the five hundred and eighty one, the final number sent to the county was three hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. So it came down two hundred and twentyish thousand dollars from this point to the end of the year when we submitted it to uh the county. Just some other notes um for reference of the six hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Around about five hundred thousand dollars is associated with, uh I'll call it homeowners. Um eighty five thousand dollars is rentals and twenty five thousand dollars is mobile property. So that's a little bit of a break on what makes up uh the assumptions that I think that had been asked in the past. That's some breakup of that. Um but again, uh following the public hearing, uh city council will consider files for certification of any remaining delinquent balances at the November twelfth regular meeting. That's all I have for for this thing.
Anybody have any comments or concerns or questions? Mr. Two, I know this is a subject very.
Kill it, but I actually don't need that because I I've been arguing on Jolo. But how much does it cost? Does anybody know what the cost is to publish these names and dollars say in the the Herald? I know it's legal to do that, correct?
It is, yes. I think it's been done in the past.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna, I'm not gonna ask Ms. Cornish on the spot directly.
I think we should. I mean, this is a huge amount of money that the ci- cities covering. And based on, I never heard back from you on that email I got from the county auditor. But we get about eighty percent next year of that number, whatever we certify.
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah, initially, probably in in year one, we get about eighty percent back. If we go back two years, you know, after you've got a little bit of time for some late ones to roll in. Um if we go to twenty twenty two, I think the amount that's outstanding is around fifteen thousand dollars. And we've looked at some um the things that we've looked at in terms of this in general, looking at shut offs and and other options. Um you know, a a fair amount of the outstanding balances related to mobile property. That's kind of why I had it in there because they um.
What is?
It's mobile homes.
Okay.
And then it's a different type of property. It's not classified as, it's personal property. So in terms of paying the property tax, it doesn't hold the same weight, so to speak, um with assessing. Um and then I've reached out to the county to work with them. They get some of the properties that might be in the forfeiture process. And there's one that we know that this isn't for one year, but it's it's a lengthy time, so it spans several years. That one property alone is over ten thousand dollars and you tell, you know, it's probably about two to three thousand a year. Um so those are kind of where, I'm kind of digging through these and trying to unravel where the dollar sits. That's kind of where the outstanding ones come. It takes, it does take a couple of years. Um but eighty eighty eighty, I would say eighty percent of that dollar value comes from um people that that just seems to be what they've chosen. They they, there's not payments made monthly under utility bills. And it's just the property tax and they pay the property tax every year on time. It's it's just um that's kind of the makeup that that we've seen that they're not part of the outstanding ones. And so I think that's something that I personally want to to keep looking into.
For a fact, you're absolutely right there. I mean, I I know some businesses and and residents, they just choose to pay their utilities twice a year. And whether it's certification or when it's time to pay their property tax and and um, yeah, so that's, that's where the setup sitting.
I think we need to keep, continue looking at everything.
As wrong as it is, Mike, I get it. As wrong as it is. Well, the thing that I don't understand is that by making a disconnect feature to the existing process, let's be real, you don't have to use it. But it's there right now. This city has zero options, none, except for the certification process. And I'm not suggesting to be the guy that's going to turn Grandma's, but come on, I've seen the list. There's some that are on there every time and it's not small change. It's seven, eight, nine thousand dollars. And with a keystroke on a computer, you can turn their electricity on. Now, that leaves the water on. I'm willing to accept that. But with a keystroke, it's not like you're sending somebody out there with moving meters, putting back, adding them on. You don't even have that option.
Well, I would say the capability exists in terms of what's in our utility billing software to
Right.
do the shut offs. It's it's, and you're right, in terms of doing the shut off and the turn off, that part is very quick and easy. But the process all that that brings with it is where we're trying to weigh the staff time and, you know, you've got to we've got to notify, you know, within certain periods of time, you get the cold weather rules. You have, you know, right now, without doing shut offs, we we don't offer like payment plans. Our payment plan is we don't shut you off. So if you uh have a hardship one month and you can't make your payment, um we don't have bank, we don't shut you off. But then the next month, you can make up or over the next couple of months, you make it up. When we put in shut offs, we will need to have and and do payment plans. And I get a little nervous with the wording that we get from the state in terms of we have to make these, we have to make these payments fair to everybody. And that leads us down the path of, are we going to need to, as a city, now start requesting personal um information from people in order to determine what is fair? This a payment for this person is different from a payment over here, and that's what I'm worried about.
And I agree. I I mean, I know that would be a concern, but I challenge you to find me another city in this state that owns their electricity. In other words, they sell their own electricity that does not have a disconnect. Find me one. And if what we're doing is the right thing and the most economical thing, why the heck aren't all these other cities doing it? I couldn't find one. I could not find another city, not bringing, I spent maybe an hour or an hour and a half, but I couldn't find one. They all had the disconnect. They all had the certification process. They had both.
Hey, I I don't think you're wrong in that the city was sort of might be somewhat of an outlier in that. I also think that city council made back in probably twenty sixteen timeframe, the decision that would be more economical at a city standpoint, the utility standpoint to say, look, we're already certifying things like dog bite fines and stuff like that to taxes. Why don't we just do the same thing with utility billing? And then we don't have to have the um the complexity of, okay, well, maybe it's not Grandma's electricity, but someone else's and they came in and only paid part of the bill. Okay, well, do we have a policy that covers a partial bill? And the city got very comfortable with the process. And um so it's not, you know, we we've got some policies that we can look at for other cities, but I am struggling um with the challenge of, and this metaphor might not be correct. I used to say, Mr. Graff, so please bear with me, I'll repeat it here, that the call on the field by city council was, we're going to start assessing these because of all of these different reasons. We think it's less painful, there's less risk involved, less risk in terms of shutting off the wrong person. Um it's more correct for our specific community, et cetera, et cetera. Um that was the call on the field. In order to overturn that call, we need an overwhelming amount of evidence saying that is no longer the correct call to make. And I don't have enough information to me today that suggests that that call needs, that that call should be overturned, or that I would recommend to council, let me say, this is not working for us in such a way that we absolutely have to start doing shut offs. I think that does make us somewhat of an outlier, but I.
Unique.
Yes, yes, extraordinary, unique, we're both unique. But I think it generally does work and our friends at the county, I get that it's it's a a lot. And I mean, they've shared that with you. Uh we also, we do maintain a very good relationship with our friends at the county auditor and treasurer's office. Brian works with them very closely. So I I think there's, would they love it if we got rid of it? Sure. Is that absolutely the best thing for our community? I don't know. I think the demonstration that the that the amount from a year ago to now increased by five percent, which is what we would expect given our rate increases. Um you know, it shows that we don't have a whole lot more people going on the rolls, that we're not bankrolling a lot more year over year over year, that we're not ultimately recovering. Um and then there's an amount in in the late fees that, again, when the late fees were implemented uh by city council or re-implemented following the pandemic, that was, oh, I'll implement these late fees and then we'll take this list of four hundred and four letters and bring it down to two hundred letters because people are not going to like paying late fees. Yeah, but so it should be submitted to an academic paper um somewhere on human psychology because it didn't work as anticipated. Um because people have just gotten in the habit of putting the bill on the recycling bin and paying it when they pay their taxes. And I don't understand that. And I think a lot of people don't, but for some people it works really well. And if it works for them and financially, you know, from a, that there are some late fees that are over compensating for the amount that for our mobile properties that we may never collect because of the nuance of mobile properties. But that's, that's what we're at. And Ryan's done a lot of digging and I really appreciate all the work that he has done, Lindsay's done digging. We had a lot of conversations around it with our team about, okay, how do we find the best alternative? best alternative moving forward for our community, for the city financially. Um, and I'd say we're still having that conversation, but I'm having a difficult time coming up with a recommendation to move away from the process that we have.
You wouldn't have to, all you'd have to do is add the option.
But it's not as easy as just adding the option to the shut offs, because we can't, we can't tell the state we're going to shut offs without setting a policy around a payment, a specific payment plan.
New Prague, St. Peter, the center, Henderson, Arlington, Glenc- you know, Glencoe, all of them.
Yep, they, they do, but again, the discovery, I mean, if council wants to do that, that's fine, but I think that's a much bigger conversation that council would have to have. Frankly, over two or three work sessions to discover whether each of those policies is what city council wants to do. Because everyone's going to have an example of, well, what happens if, and then we'll address it, we can do all of that.
Did all those other cities?
Yep, yes, also admittedly, though, those, a lot of those cities have had those shut off policies, and they just for decades maybe, and then put them on the shelf during COVID, dusted them off after COVID. This city had turned away from shut off policy back in, almost ten years ago now, and legislation's changed since then around what you can and can't do. Um, policies at state level have changed on what you can and can't do, our own utility has changed, um, so that, I get it, um.
It's just the numbers to me, um, three hundred and fifty thousand either versus twelve thousand for New Prague? Come on.
Yeah.
My thing is amazing is the four hundred and four letters, that's ten percent of our population. I mean, that's somebody, probably twenty five percent of the households, right? I just don't get it, yeah, so that's.
And granted, that number, there's some that they technically, the way we do this, and the timing, they could pay three days late, and it's the first time they've been late in two years, and they happen to end up on just because of the timing, you know, so there's, there's some that it's, it's just timing and they end up on there and actually by the time we mailed the letter out, they, they may have already paid, and we didn't even need to send it, but, but it is, it makes it, it's probably about twenty five percent of our accounts.
Let me see, Tui, everything you mentioned, you, we, we appreciate your comments, your concerns, we will be entertaining this subject again on October fourteenth.
Okay.
So, uh, with that, I would, uh, ask for a motion to call public hearing related to the delinquent utility accounts to be held on October fourteenth, and we're in the city, city council. Who can have that motion?
So move.
I'm sorry, is that? Okay, Mr. Tui?
Okay, give it to him.
Mr. Tui, second one, Mr. Tui, thank you. Any other comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The eyes have. Moving on to, uh, our last agenda item for late, uh, and agenda item seven C, resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero four five, updating the government fee schedule. Mr. Roby?
Just thinking, Mr. Mayor, um, as the council knows, because this council has addressed it before, every once in a while, there's a new, new, uh, change to a fee or an addition or removal from a fee schedule that the council's asked to consider um, as part of the passage of Oregon six oh nine, uh, which will be summarily published, um, for the consent agenda approval tonight. Staff took a look at what type of licensing fee might be appropriate for a mobile food unit license. Uh, the proposal is to add to the governmental fee schedule for twenty twenty four, an annual fee of fifty dollars per mobile food license, so that would be paid at some, pay when they submit their application and they're approved, we get them accounted, your license, and they pay fifty dollars in the future of the year. Um, I think that's enough to cover the, you know, processing and background check and things like that, but it's not meant to be prohibitive, yeah, there, yes, punitive, yes. And it's, it's not, if you look at some other communities around here, it's, it's extraordinary when some cities charge their mobile food units, but, um, we don't seem to need to do that, so, we, plus fifty dollars.
Thank you, anybody have any questions regarding this, anybody? If not, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution R twenty twenty four dash zero four five as presented. So move, Mr. Tui first, and then, uh, Mr. Leader seconded. Any other comments, concerns, if not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose the eyes have. Moving on to reports and items of appreciation, council members, this is your opportunity to go along with your committees, your missions, and the community, so we'll start as always with, uh, Councilmember Honeyton.
Good, 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 Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Shley.
I attended a climate smart municipalities meeting last Friday. Upcoming, there's a planning commission meeting on Thursday, I'm going to be attending a region night sustainable energy systems tour on Friday, September nineteenth. And as city administrator Roby mentioned, the future of the city survey is live now through the twenty seventh, I would encourage all residents, students, business owners, property owners to participate in it, because we will be using that for the future of the city forum on October twenty sixth.
Thank you, moving on, Councilmember Sullivan.
Uh, the only thing I have is we have a transit meeting tomorrow at two thirty.
Thank you, that's it, thank you, uh, Councilmember Swanburn.
Nothing today.
Nothing today, Councilmember Tui.
I promise not to forget that meeting for tomorrow.
Councilmember Williams.
Um, I just want to compliment, uh, the Lions and the Boy Scouts and working in collaboration for the flying that happened on Sunday, and the community for participating in it, they had great turnout, over three hundred people at least, so. It was fun to see everybody out there.
Thank you, and, uh, I was out there, the pancakes were good, the turnout was wonderful, the weather was great, so. With that, I have nothing else, I will entertain a motion to dismiss this meeting. So move, the Councilmember Honeyton, all those in favor?